Public forums are being held throughout the school year to share what is happening at our schools and to get input from our stakeholders. This evening, we are addressing the important topic of substance abuse prevention. Across the nation and in our own community, young people engage in behaviors that can put their health at risk. We must continue to find ways to address this in what we teach them, in how we respond when we uncover misuse, in how we direct people to resources for support. This issue goes beyond the walls of any school. In fact, it is an issue important to all of us as a community. That's why we've come together for this town hall meeting. This evening, we will share the work that we're doing and we will seek your input for the work that lies ahead. I would have several people here I'd like to introduce that are going to be part of tonight's discussion. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ms. Mary Washington, our board member. Dr. Scott Smith, superintendent. We have some panelists who I'd like to introduce that will be coming up shortly to share their work from practitioners' perspectives. Say that three times fast. Mr. Christopher Shea from the St. Mary's County Health Department. Corporal Angela Delosier from the Sheriff's Office. Ms. Annette Wood, pupil personnel worker from St. Mary's County Schools. And Mr. Joshua Wright, a student at Leonardtown High School. Also with us this evening, we have Dr. Maureen Montgomery, Deputy Superintendent. Dr. Jeff Walker, Assistant Superintendent of Supporting Services. Dr. Kelly Hall, Executive Director of Supplemental Support Programs. And Mr. Mike Wyatt, Director of Safety and Security. I also want to thank the Office of Strategic Planning and Communications, as well as the students here at the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center who are recording this evening's event, which will be broadcast on our YouTube channel. Tonight's agenda will include just brief introductions and welcome purpose setting, as well as an overview of our work and a panel discussion, which again, as I mentioned, will feature some practitioners. And we'll have an opportunity at that time for questions and answers from anyone in the audience as well. After the panel, we'll have an opportunity for some community input where we have some questions for you that will help to inform our work. Now, I'd like to welcome Ms. Cheryl Long, who will provide us some opening comments, and will also be facilitating our panel this evening. Cheryl?
On this beautiful fall day, thank you for choosing to be inside with us to learn about substance abuse prevention in our schools, ask questions, and offer suggestions to inform our work. Campaigns to warn people about the consequences of substance abuse have been around for many, many years. You may remember campaigns such as "Friends Don't Let Friends Drive Drunk," and "This Is Your Rain on Drugs," that were seen as television advertisements. With the rapid growth of social media, it is no wonder a community effort is now needed to educate our students and families on the dangers of substance abuse and efforts focusing on prevention. In our schools, we know the importance of school connectedness, a student's belief that adults and peers in their school care about their learning and about them as individuals as we teach them about healthy habits. We know that prevention programs have proven to be effective, but we also know that families and influential adults outside of schools continue to play the most important role in determining how youth respond to engaging in risky behaviors such as substance abuse. Preventing substance abuse involves families, school, and community. This evening, our panelists will help us to understand how helping students make healthy choices comes not only from within our schools, but from our community partners as well. I'd like to call your attention to the objectives for this evening. Tonight, we are going to engage in a community conversation about the dangers of substance abuse and ways to provide educational resources and support, and we will also gather input from the community to inform substance prevention initiatives, programs, and community education campaigns. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Smith to come up for a few words.
Thank you very much, Ms. Long. Thank you, Dr. Maureen. Thank you for all who have joined us this evening. Turnout's a little sparse, and that's okay because we are filming this. Afterwards, we will be posting it on social media, and what we found is that we do generate quite an audience after the fact by those who are interested or who need information when they need information. Ultimately, the school system is in the role of educator. We are educators. It is our job to inform. It is our job to carry a message. It is our job to help form good and sustainable academic and also social-emotional habits with our children. We have, as a school system, for the past several years focused on the whole child. We believe that to be educated successfully in St. Mary's County, we can't just be focusing on the curriculum and the assessment and the data points and the formative assessments and the marks that you receive. We have to take a look at the whole child in front of us. And we've talked a little bit over the past several years, a great deal, about feeling safe, feeling supported, feeling engaged, and in fact, that's how we start our year, by talking about how we make connections with one another, how we help kids and staff feel as though they belong to something more than just themselves, more than just their smaller community. We have to challenge them, and ultimately, you have to be healthy. You have to be healthy of body, you have to be healthy of mind, and ultimately, you have to be healthy of spirit. So every few years, they have the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is administered to our children. We have the data back from 2016, and these are hard facts. These are facts that I want to argue against and want to say, "No, not our kids. Our kids don't do that." But the truth is, our kids self-report that 1 in 4 have been offered or sold or provided an illicit drug in the schools that they currently attend. Thirty-one percent, almost 1 in 3, have said that they have tried marijuana or a marijuana product, such as a vaping product that has THC infused in it. Sixty-one percent said that they have tried alcohol, and 1/3 said that they routinely encounter and use alcohol in some form. So we have a sparse turnout tonight. But more than half of our kids say that they have drank. A third say that they do so consistently. A third of them say that they have been exposed to drugs. A fourth say that they have been exposed to drugs or illicit substances in school. And we need to be part of that conversation in our children's lives. We need to do everything that we possibly can to help them understand the importance of good decisions. When to say no, how to say no, why to say no. We have some fantastic partners, because we cannot do this work alone. We cannot do this work just within our schools. It's in our parking lots, in our playing fields, and on our stages, and in our communities, and in our homes. And so we have to draw upon others to work with children beyond the school. And that's why I'm really pleased tonight to have a panel to come before you that has not only representatives from St. Mary's County Public Schools, but also representatives Chris Shea from the Health Department and Angie Delosier from the Sheriff's Department, because these are probably our strongest partners in working to inform, help, and assist children when they are exposed to things that they shouldn't be exposed to. And then finally, we have Josh Wright, who is going to talk to us a little bit about the education we've tried to do with kids and how we've tried to use our students to deliver a message, because we find that adolescents and teenagers, they receive messages much better from their peers than they do from perhaps 53-year-old superintendents. You have the handouts. You see them. I kind of summarized where we are. The biggest thing that we have been focusing on as a system, particularly this year, is the bottom bullet. Forty-two percent of our students have tried vape products. Half, basically. So to parents who might be watching this video, or who might be talking to their children, half of all children have tried a vape product. And Corporal Delosier will tell you that that number seems pretty optimistic. It's prevalent. It's everywhere. And we are heartened by the fact that we have people who are filing lawsuits against Juul and other organizations and manufacturers who are purposely targeting our children with bubble gum-flavored, easy-to-disguise nicotine-delivery devices. Hopefully, they will be held to account, and hopefully, we'll actually have legislators move forward to curb this kind of victimization of our young people, because it's simply put, that's exactly what it is. In St. Mary's County Public Schools, we're heartened by the fact that you have to be now 21-years-old to buy a tobacco or a vaping product. Unfortunately, I think we need a closer reading of that law, because some of the tools that we use to curb underage smoking have been removed. The school system has not wavered, and in fact, we're ramping up the consequences for vaping in school. We are going to give everybody that first time, "Whoops, I made a mistake. Oh, that's not my vape. Oh, somebody handed it to me. I didn't know what I was doing," what have you. That first time that you get caught, it's going to be a consequence of some kind of an in-school consequence. It will be a confiscation of the device. It will be a phoning to the parent or guardian. It will be informing everybody of the consequences of the decisions that the young people are making. And then the next time, it's going to be out-of-school suspension. It's going to be out-of-school suspension. It's going to be permanently on their record. It's going to impact whether or not they're involved in extracurricular activities. We're talking about using it for loss of privilege. We are here at the Tech Center. It's right next to Leonardtown High School. Right in front of Leonardtown High School, there's about 300 parking spaces, and there are 1,800 kids. So parking spaces are a premium. Vape in school, and have that privilege denied you. It'll totally change your life. That's pretty much all we can do. That's the most that the school system can do. From that point forward, we have to look to our partners, to our legislators, to our leaders in the community to help take this out of our children's hands. Because if anybody thinks it's a good idea to give an adolescent a concentrated nicotine device and then say, "Do that in school and then try to study," it's terrible. Some of the vaping products that kids have, it's basically like the one pod is like a whole pack of cigarettes. Corporal Delosier is nodding her head. So what we are doing, because our role is to educate. Our role is to educate. Our role is to educate. We don't want to be all about consequence. We want to help you make good decisions. We've gone out of our way to work with our young people all last year. The Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, we talked about how important it is to get messages out to kids, not only all of the whole-child messages, not only to the dangers of drugs, but the dangers of vaping, the dangers of social-emotional distress. And they created a whole host of public service announcements. In fact, Joshua Wright's going to be on the panel with us and be able to tell us a little bit more. But I'd like to preview those PSAs for you this evening, so you can just see what kind of work our kids are doing to try to get that education and that information out. Thirty seconds. A very powerful message. We've used grant funds from the state of Maryland to create not only that PSA, but then also to push it out in theaters and on Comcast Cable and on all of our social media platforms. We've also purchased, how many billboards? Four. Four billboards with that same image to kind of reinforce how incredibly important it is that our kids understand the consequences of simple actions. And then we have fentanyl.
Got the stuff? Got the stuff?
Yeah. By the way, that's not normal coke. It's got fentanyl.
What's that?
It's an opioid. That's like morphine, but it's only about 100 times more potent. It's good stuff, man. A trace can kill you.
What?
Yeah. It's a lifetime supply. You only have to take it once. Have fun.
If you knew the cost, would you take the risk?
A 30-second spot. Things that our children are encountering today are exponentially more dangerous than they were 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago. We pretty much had, you know, 15 years ago, you wouldn't have had people down here talking about heroin. You certainly wouldn't have had anybody talking about fentanyl. Nobody knew what fentanyl was. The fact now that fentanyl is being cut with cocaine and heroin, I mean, oh my gosh, you have no idea. You have no, kids have no idea what they might be encountering.
We all have a choice. Don't choose to throw your life away.
Hey, man, you gotta try this.
Man, I don't know if I should.
It won't hurt you, man. Just do it. Just try it.
All right.
Very brief for vaping itself, so as if vaping wasn't dangerous enough, and not only a terrible, you know, breathing in of concentrated nicotine and whatever else might be in your bubblegum-flavored bit of hit. People are adding THC, they're bootlegging the pods themselves, and they're doing irreparable damage to their lungs to the point of needing extensive surgeries or passing away. Finally, it seems like we finally have the attention on it that it has needed for the past several years, but it's something we need to continue to focus on. So if you want to know more about what St. Mary's County Public Schools is doing, you can go to our website. On the front, you can see all the information that's coming up, all the information on upcoming town hall meetings. Right in the middle of the page and also in hard copy, we have our annual report. Our annual report from the last year, 2018, 2000 school year, is organized by the whole child kind of concept that talks about how we're doing something for each one of those incredibly important components. And we will be putting out the upcoming in November. We'll have a state of the schools right here at the James J. Forrest Career and Technology Center, and we'll be doing very much the same thing that we were doing last year, talking about all the different ways that we serve the children in St. Mary's County. So with that, I would like to introduce and bring up our panel, so they can talk a little bit about and have the panel moderated by Ms. Long, so Ms. Long's going to have to come back up and moderate. So we have Mr. Christopher Shea, a prevention coordinator from St. Mary's County Health Department. If you could come on up and take your place up on the dais. And could we have Corporal Angela Delosier, our School Resource Officer here for the Leonardtown High School, Leonardtown High School campus, come on up. And Ms. Annette Wood, who has had many different roles in St. Mary's County Public Schools and is currently serving as a pupil personnel worker. And then finally, Mr. Joshua Wright, to talk a little bit about and give some insight into perspective of our students and what we're doing with our students to help deliver an important message and educate all. And with that, Ms. Cheryl Long.
We're going to begin with prepared questions for our panelists. And I'll begin with Mr. Shea. How does the Health Department work with our school community on prevention initiatives?
Good evening, and it's a pleasure and honor to be here representing the St. Mary's County Health Department. When we talk about the tobacco, vaping, and e-cigarettes, the Health Department is currently in the process of working with the school system to offer an educational class for students who end up having a referral for possession and/or use of the tobacco or vape products. Many Health Department staff are frequently in the schools, educating the students on the harmful effects of drugs and alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, including vape devices. And one of those events that are coming up would be the Ribbon Week. Student involvement includes the Great Mills High School Tobacco-Free Living Junior Team. This team works to educate their peers and other youth on the harmful effects of vaping. And this year, they'll be going out to the elementary schools to educate 5th graders on vaping and the harmful effects. Our prevention staff work closely with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, assisting with focus groups and feedback on drug and alcohol issues influencing our youth. Prevention also provides support and funding through the Community Alcohol Coalition and their efforts with the Project Graduation. And additionally, Health Department staff sit on the School Health Council.
Thank you. And just as we heard from what Dr. Smith had shared about the videos, peers reaching out to peers, and Mr. Shea, thank you for sharing that as well with the Great Mills High School team in working then in educating the 5th grade students. Very important, it appears, to be giving that message. Corporal Delosier, can you share your work with the DARE program? What does the DARE program address and how is it implemented in our schools?
Okay. Or good evening, everyone. So I am with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office. I've actually been in law enforcement for 22 years. The last 15's been with the Sheriff's Office, and the last 12 has been as the School Resource Officer. And where I grew up in Laurel, Delaware, we did not have a program called, I didn't know anything about the DARE program until I actually came here to St. Mary's County. It's definitely opened up my eyes. One of the things with our partnerships with the Board of Education is that our School Resource Officers are trained in the DARE curriculum. That's not an easy feat. It is actually an 80-hour credit program that our officers go away to in Sykesville. When they come back, that program is then implemented in the 6th grade in the middle school curriculum for DARE. It's really quite interesting, if you look at all the curriculum, whether it be the elementary, middle school, or high school program that DARE offers, because they all have the same basic theme. It's about decision-making. And it's always letting the children know that they have choices and they have options. It may not be the best option, but the program, if I can lean on the DARE decision-making model, it talks about defining what the problem is at the moment. It's not just about drug use. It's about the types of friends that you choose. It's about the tobacco. You know, do you vape? Do you not vape? It's about educating them what their options are. Take a look at what your options are, and then you respond. Was it the best thing that I could have done at the particular time? So with the Sheriff's Office being in the schools, and in the middle schools particularly, our officers get to teach about eight different classes in every middle school. And I did a little bit of math, because I thought it was kind of, I'm sorry if I'm going a little above and beyond the scope of your question. But I got thinking about, I have actively taught DARE for eight years. And since I've been in the high school, I do some supplemental lessons on whether it be vaping, bullying, prescription, drug abuse, et cetera. But in eight years, if I taught eight classes at one school, that's 64 classes, and we have to double that up because I had two schools, that's 128 classes with a minimum of 25 kids in every class. I would have, in a matter of eight years, reached out to 3,200 children. So just in our community, in eight years of me teaching, I have spoken to our children about decision-making, the options that they have, and whether or not what they chose, if that was the best possible option for them. And it has gone from smoking to drinking to being in relationships of domestic violence to what kind of affiliation they have with the friends in their schools. So it's not just about drug use, but it is about making good, safe decisions.
Thank you. And so, in a skill that's so, so important, you know, with our students, and, you know, definitely something that our teachers engage in too when they're in their classrooms about the importance of decision-making and looking at your options. So I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ms. Wood, as a pupil personnel worker, please share the role you play in working with students and families that have been impacted by substance abuse.
In my role as a pupil personnel worker and with my team that supports each other through this process, we do a lot with decision-making and the consequences that have come about because of substance abuse. It could be whether a family member has substance abuse, a student, but those consequences are far-reaching for our kids. Our job, first job, is to educate them, and sometimes that gets in the way if there's other issues at home brought on by substance abuse. For example, if a parent is using and they lose their job, then the next step would be they lose their housing. And for students, that's very critical, that they're losing their possessions or their friends. So our job as pupil personnel workers are to work with the family when they're honest with us and telling, to find resources for them, to make sure the students have consistent schooling, so that something stays the same for them, so they can excel, because that's our job, to educate. We also work with various agencies in our community to provide supports, whether it's referring them to an outside agency for counseling, visits with the Health Department for classes. We'll work with the Department of Social Services with parents that are struggling to make ends meet, and our faith-based organizations and community organizations to make sure kids have what they need to be in school, and they don't have to suffer the consequences that some of their parents or their guardians may have made that has affected them.
And, you know, the words that you said when you first began your answer, "Consequences are far-reaching," and, you know, how we see that within our school system and working with our families, so important to bring that to light. Thank you, Ms. Wood. And Mr. Wright? Can you share how you have worked with fellow students to share important messages about avoiding risky behavior such as substance abuse?
Over the summer, me and a team of other students, we put together these videos that was... Testing? Okay, that's better. Over the summer, me and a team of other students did a number of videos that was meant to educate students on the risks and the consequences of vaping and drugs and opioids specifically. The goal was to use as many ideas from other middle schoolers and other high schools as possible to put together a list of videos that produced and that had their ideas, but at the same time presented our goal to tell everybody about the risks and the consequences of what students are using, those that consistently use drugs or vaping, and those that may be thinking about using drugs and vaping. The Slack meeting last year, there was a host of different high schools and different middle schoolers, and they each had an assignment to write and plan out different scripts for commercials and ideas. And me and a few other students, we walked around and we were told to take those ideas, jot them down, and later, we put them together into scripts to create a series of opioid videos. So a lot of those videos that you all saw tonight was the finished product, many revisions along the way, but the finished product of the students' ideas from Slack that we thought best represented their core idea, but at the same time exposed the effects and consequences of drugs and opioid use.
Thank you. Thank you. Very powerful videos, absolutely. I have just a few general questions that I want to ask of the panel, and any member of the panel may answer. Just to, in particular, if you could do one thing, if there was one thing that we could do to prevent youth substance abuse, what would it be?
So one of the first things I think that I would do is, our youth are driven off of pop culture, and I think that's a big ginormous web of chaos because it entails our advertisers. I definitely would be more, I would be so strict on advertising criteria, and I would be strict on what our children are being fed as far as that, you know, what they're being sold as, this is the perception, this is how awesome it is. Your family unit can do so much, but when the family unit's not there, what are they being told? What are they being said is culturally acceptable and stuff of that nature? I would try to change that, or at least curb it, so that the kids, they feel that it's okay. So that would be one of the first things I would tackle.
And it makes me, I appreciate that, and it makes me think back to the videos, right, in answer to that. I mean, I think that's some of the messaging, Josh, if I'm right, that you're trying to send out to those, to our students and peers. Anyone else? Any single thing that you could?
Well, for us from the Health Department, a couple of things that we're focused on within the schools, all revolves around one word, and that word is prevention. If we can work more on prevention, then hopefully, everything else falls into place. And currently, what we've been working with the school system and putting into place is a prevention program which is called... is a prevention program which is called conscious discipline. And this helps to create the social and emotional responses from our children as early as pre-K. We're also working on a program called the Bot Vin Life Skills, and that's currently being done at Great Mills High School. If we can take some of these programs and increase their usage around the system as well as other prevention programs, that we feel would be really the one thing that would be most effective.
Thank you. One more question for the panel from me, and I think this is very important for our families within our schools, is what advice do you have for parents?
I think the best advice would be to check up on their kids, to check up on their students, because a lot of times when you get to high school, or you're a senior, a junior, a sophomore, sometimes even a freshman, that parent implementation kind of goes away because you're kind of developing and you're becoming your own person, your own man or your own woman, getting ready for college and jobs. And a lot of time, that parental, some of that parental supervision is left behind. And a lot of parents don't know what their kids are into during school or outside of school or during parties or hangouts. So, maybe for the parents to become more involved with their kids' social life, because sometimes you really don't know.
Great message. Thank you.
I appreciate your answer. So, I really want to piggyback off of that because how powerful that is that he's saying that. I tell parents all the time, be nosy. You paid for the phone, you pay for the service, you need to check up on your children. Your children will tell you what you're doing, what they're doing, all on social media. I have to say, I have four children in my home, 17, 16, 8, and 2. The two-year-old obviously doesn't have electronics yet. However, the eight-year-old is extremely savvy in Fortnite. I know all the dances. The 17- and 16-year-old are on the phones as well, but I monitor their time and I pay the extra money to put spyware on their electronics. I don't lie to them, they know they have it, but I follow up. If we're doing Snapchat, if we're doing TikTok, I really hate downloading it, but I do it. And I want to know, what is this program about? The most precious thing I have in my household are my four children. My husband slides in close second. I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I knew that I was taking the easy route and just going, oh, I don't know about that stuff. Be nosy. Check their rooms, check their phones. It's okay if they're mad with you. They'll love you for it in the end.
I think one of the things as an educator that you want to tell parents is, admit that maybe you've made some bad choices so that students have an opportunity to grow from that experience and reach out when you need the help. Don't be afraid or ashamed that you do need the help. There are resources in our community and our school that we could help you make better choices or decisions for your whole family.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'd like to entertain any questions that we may have from audience members? Yes?
On the youth risk behavior survey that's out there, 18% are currently... On the youth risk behavior survey, where 18% are currently using marijuana, which means sometime within the past month, then it's considered regular use. Marijuana stays within assistance 30 days. So, this is a whole lot different than tobacco or alcohol. Alcohol goes out of system all the time. So, I'm wondering, what are we doing to detect this? Because if these kids are using this stuff and coming into the school, they're praying and what are the consequences about using it? And as Chris Shager is from the Health Department, they put out a lot of information on the arms of marijuana. And one of the major arms in this general health is their disposition. It makes some people at all, it makes some people very angry, some aggressive, some hateful. And it's these few that once they get among the non-using kids, that are causing a lot of concern among them about bullying and everything else. And one of the horrible statistics is the number of suicides by young kids in schools because of their frustration with the sense that they're not able to cope with this, they're not being protected. So, I know that there's tests exist, and now they're, saliva test. In 10 minutes, you can detect if a kid's been exposed to marijuana. And then the consequences should be strengthened counseling immediately. But the parents have to ultimately say so on this because they got the atom bomb. And that's, you ain't used the damn cord by if you found using drugs. And that's a sensible attitude. So, there has to be consequences, but there's a lot of stuff to know.
Yeah. We certainly do work with our parents on that. You know, when we have, when we have students that we're concerned about, we definitely want to partner with our parents.
Oh, absolutely. And I know that, that as far as having, having students tested and going through in all of the kits and, I know that the Health Department, does the Health Department do any kind of testing like that or working with parents? If they have, if they...
Will work in educating on the parents, but we don't do the actual testing.
Actually do the actual testing.
One of the, one of the things, one of the things that will happen, if I get, was to give you a scenario, is let's say a student comes in under the influence of some type of central nervous depressant, all right, central nervous system depressant, like marijuana, all right? We'll use marijuana as an example. Those are some of the things that obviously within my line of work, I have been trained to detect. Our nurses do an excellent job with that as well. And our teachers, if they're using the traditional marijuana and they're not using a THC oil that's flavored with the flavor of the month, it is something that's pretty apparent. Our staff does an amazing job of alerting the assistant principals or the appropriate administration, and then that's when we come in. One of the biggest things that I do is, is, you know, why do you need to be high to make it through the day? I'm thinking the same thing you had just said about coping skills. So, the next thing I'm going to do is I'm going to provide the resources that I have, because it's not about just arresting people or issuing citations. That doesn't fix what the problem is. That's just a temporary solution, right? So, I often partner with the wonderful counselors I have at Leonardtown High School to get the family and hope that those parents will take a hold of the reins and say, okay, my kid needs help. I still attempt to build a relationship with that student because what I want to do is I want to find out, is this the way they're coping? And then the next thing I think about is, boy, I surely am glad that you're here. At least you're here and I know you're safe. And that's another conversation that we tend to have. And that's not the student who's raising a ruckus in the schoolhouse. That's a student who's just trying to survive. And that's when we do our referrals to the Health Department, we do our referrals to our counselors and whatnot. So, there's a lot of different stories that happen under that small little roof we call a school.
And I will tell you that one of the things with the Health Department that we partnered with and wrote a grant last year...
Right. Yes.
Sure, go ahead, jump in with that.
Yeah, I was just going to jump in on that too.
You all did the work, so go ahead and talk a little bit about that.
We had the same thought. Corporal Delosier was a good, gave me a good path in there, because not only with the school counselors do our students work with, but we did partner with the Health Department to write a grant for eight social workers that we now have in our, that were in the process of hiring. We have some on board already in our secondary schools, and they absolutely work with our students around those concerns as well and with the parents. So, a valuable resource in our schools that we hope to continue to grow.
And, and just as, just as a reminder, although we are absolutely in the, we are all about educating children, we are all about getting to the root cause, we are all about wrapping them in supports and support structures, even though the state of Maryland has decriminalized the possession and use of marijuana under 10 grams? Under 10 grams. The school system has never changed its, its code of conduct. So, if you are showing use or you are in possession of even the smallest amount, it's a suspendable out-of-school offense. And if you provided it to somebody else, it's distribution, which then puts you up for an extended suspension conference. The consequences are fairly dire. And that's part of our, our job with kids is to understand, you know, the consequences of decisions that they make and certainly the decisions that they make within the schoolhouse. The one thing that we're going to really have to emphasize this year, and I think that actually, social media, media in general, newspapers have done a really good job of emphasizing what has happened most recently with the kids who have the THC-infused vaping devices and the irreparable lung damage that it's, it's causing. And I think, I hope, it appears that kids seem to be getting that message, that they do seem to at least be hearing that message. Whether or not they're taking it to heart, we'll, we'll see. But the school system, you know, this is one of our, this is one of our greatest opportunities to partner with the Health Department, with the Sheriff's Department, to do everything we possibly can to, to help our kids be safe and healthy in schools.
To piggyback off of that, if I may, just to piggyback off of that, the new law, we still handle marijuana the same way we always have, all right? If a kid is under the influence, we're going to further investigate that and make sure they're not in possession of anything and that there's been no distribution. But the new law with the cigarettes and the fact that, you know, now you can be in possession of it, but you just can't purchase it, it really has hindered our investigative pieces because THC oil has become such the fad. So, if, if I see Johnny over there and I know he's, you know, 17, but he can't purchase an e-cigarette, but he's got a pen in his hand, what right do I have to go over there and talk to him about what kind of pen he has, what's in your pen and of that nature when the law now has said, well, they can be in possession of it? So, it truly has caused us some strife when it comes to trying to help curtail our children from being in possession of those types of products.
Right. Because even though the, as of October 1st, they repealed 10-108, which made it, you know, illegal for a minor to be in possession of a tobacco, tobacco or tobacco product, vaping product. Even though they repealed that, the school system did not because we are still tobacco-free, drug-free. So, if Johnny, poor Johnny, Johnny does everything. It's always Johnny, it's often Johnny, yes. So, if Johnny does have a vaping device in school, although the law enforcement can't necessarily approach them for that, school administration certainly can. And we absolutely confiscate the device and then we hand it to our school resource officers to then go investigate to see whether it is just a traditional vaping device with a jewel-related pod or whether it had been augmented in some fashion. Basically, we become, you know, CSI.
We conduct a dance that is beautiful and fluid.
Yes. But ultimately, the, the goal is to keep kids, is to keep kids safe, to keep kids safe in school.
And to continue then with the dance, that's where we're coming in with our, you know, monthly program from the Health Department to then educate and give the data to the students who have been caught with these devices, who have been partaking. And hopefully, through the education that we can provide and then coupled with the counseling and everything else going on in the schools, the dance continues and we hopefully don't see them again in subsequent months.
Bones point, and if ultimately we can, truly, the, the best partner we have has got to be the parent in the home. So, that as we have confiscated the device, the parent comes in to pick up the device, the parent can tell us, well, you know, there's going to be a consequence at the home as well. That's great. And perhaps loss of privilege such as driving a car, that's a fantastic way to go about getting a young, young person's attention.
Yes.
My question, I see we have partnerships going, and again, it's about prevention and looking at generational cycles and people that might be in prison because of drug abuse and the many issues they face in terms of coping and that kind of thing. Is there a way that partners are working together to identify those children that you can see from day one that have that self-esteem issue going, that might be a part of a family that had those drug abuse, the families, the parents are, you know, on drugs? But we know the little children don't start out that way, but because of the environment they're in. So, early prevention and look at, well, first jail, and he's in for drug abuse, and there's little Johnny in school, Jenny in school, and she ends up, or they end up, in that same vicious cycle.
And, and if I could, just so, and I know, I'm going to kind of kick this to Ms. Annette Wood, because that's so right in the role of a pupil personnel worker. But I will also tell you that a reference to conscious discipline, conscious discipline is also part of and incorporated into and as well as adverse childhood experiences, trauma-informed. We've done a lot of work about the social-emotional environment of children who are generationally exposed to really challenging situations.
That's correct. Oftentimes, it's very hard for a kid to realize that my mom or dad is in jail. Some are embarrassed to admit it, some are not freely, they admit it freely to us, and they seek out support sometimes. But students, we, one thing we have to do when we're working with a child is stay, you can still love your mommy and daddy or whoever's in jail. They just made a wrong choice. And trying to give them strategies that they can move forward, that there is other options. You know, we provide lots of resources to kids and say, you can do this with your life. This is what you want to do or what you want to be. We support the families when they come out because sometimes as pupil personnel, we have families come to us and say, I can't find housing because I got out of jail and now it's not a sponge and I can't get housing help. So, they're looking for resources there. And so, we provide them resources to go to the public library where they have attorneys helping with expungement so that they can get some housing assistance and things. So, the kids do have a safe place and make some better choices. But it's the families reaching out and working with us and with the kids to support them and say, it's okay to love your family member, because that's the hardest thing to say, that my mom or dad does something bad or did something bad. They can still love them, but they need to know that there are other choices. And I think it's, it's a long road for them to understand that.
So, I'm going to reference DARE real quick.
Sure.
One of the things I would love to see, I don't think it would happen in very long times, I would like to see DARE in the elementary school. I've heard the word social-emotional learning several times this evening, and that's what the elementary curriculum is based in. It's based in self-awareness management, responsible decision-making, understanding others, relationships, communication skills, and handling responsibilities and challenges. And what's so awesome about the DARE program is, and I'm not saying that doesn't happen in the middle school, it does, it's just we really ramp it up a notch in the middle school. So, we throw all that stuff in there and then we really talk about grounding them in their cultural norms and stuff of that nature with the peers and whatnot. But it's, it's amazing because your teachers and the SROs in your schools, they see these kiddos when they come in. We probably already know the families because one of the number-one things is said, do you know my brother? My brother's name is? Or do you know my mom? And one of the hardest things that, that myself is able, has ever had to do is put a nice face on and smile and go, yes, honey, I do, I do know, I think I know your mama or I know your brother, whatever, but make it okay. Because they're asking me if I know them, not for a good reason, right? And then it's having, learning, teaching them to, that they're in control of themselves. I'm not judging them from their mom, their dad, or anyone else. And that's what's so awesome about DAREs because you're putting that police officer in there and they're saying, look, you're okay and you're not like your family, you can be whatever it is you want to be, right? I just, I, I don't know what I wanted my message to you to be other than, kids are, it's like planting that seed. It's like that farmer that goes out there every year, you know? They have a process. And what you see up here are processes. You know, you see the person who's tilling the field, making sure that ground is suitable, they're making sure whatever nutrients need to be there. And then you're planting that seed and you water it and you hope that you've given it enough that it's going to produce. We need our kids to produce. You have the processes here. If, if I could take a child and, and make them their full potential, I'd do it in a heartbeat. My husband, we would have that whole hundred acres filled up with children. But you can't. You can only give them the tools and hope that they, that they produce and they do what you know that they can do. I hope, I hope I...
I just, I kind of want to piggyback on that. I think the DARE program in elementary school would be an awesome idea because a lot of times that, that choice to start trying things, trying drugs, alcohol, it all starts really at elementary school because a lot of times if they have parents that are in jail or incarcerated because of drug-related incidents, they already have a disadvantage because they're in that envi- because they're in that environment. And they don't have that guidance to tell them, don't do this or don't do that. But having a DARE program in elementary schools can help provide that guidance that they may be missing. And come to the teen years and middle school, they'll have less of a chance or be less at risk to try drugs and get addicted to things. Because even a lot of students who are in high school now and who are using jewels and marijuana and stuff, they don't even know that they're addicted sometimes, and it's really sad.
Hi, my name's Lauren, Lauren Burr. I'm a nurse at the hospital and I am in my bachelor's program. I'm doing my thesis on drug prevention in the community. And I really wanted to keep going with this elementary school theme here. I have, one of the places I assessed as part of my research is elementary school drug prevention. And I also have a seven-year-old daughter myself who's in elementary school, so that really interested me. And it seems that there really isn't anything right now in the elementary schools that's geared towards, the same way how we hit hard with the middle school and the high school is as far as drug prevention go. And I agree with Mr. Wright that, you know, in the, in elementary school, I feel like we're really getting into good habits, we're learning about how to handle social interactions, positive and negative social interactions, coping skills, things of that nature. And I think that if we can attack that, the prevention of substance abuse through maybe those modalities earlier on before they even get to middle school where they're dealing with all, a whole new realm of life in middle school, that that would kind of be, that would be a great preventative measure by the time they get to middle school. It's, you know, they're not, they're not struggling with the middle school stuff in elementary school, you know, it's a different playing field and we can meet them there. So as, from a parent's perspective, unless I'm, you know, in my assessment, it's wrong and I, I'm just not aware of what's going on in the elementary schools right now, is there anything going on in the elementary schools right now that kind of attacked the substance abuse issue? I know you said that you'd really like to see a DARE program in an elementary school. I know that there's not now, but is there, is there anything, what kind of support for those elementary school kids?
Pretty sure that you guys, the elementary schools really capitalize on Red Ribbon Week.
Yeah.
And I believe that that is addressed at that.
Absolutely. They, yeah, they really hit that hard, Red Ribbon Week.
See, it is hard to say.
Mr. Yen over, I know, it really is, yeah. Yeah, in making healthy choices, so that, they definitely take advantage of that opportunity and carry it through the year, certainly.
And that is one of the reasons why we're doing this now during this month at this time to dovetail into Red Ribbon Week. That's why they were recognized before the Board of Ed, that's why we had a story in the enterprise and across all of our social media. Within the health curriculum, specifically, I think it's in fifth grade, they talk a great deal about choices and they do talk about things that you shouldn't try and that you shouldn't do. It's not as aggressive as we'll see in the middle and high school, but that is part of it. I will plug for two things. First, we have future leaders of the world. We are looking for mentors, we continue to look for mentors. We need to have active mentors in our elementary school working with our children. For the record, the kids that come and work with us in the Flow mentoring program are often children that desperately need an adult who is going to take an active role in their lives and once a week, they need to spend about an hour with these kids, and it's really important. So if you know of anybody who would like to actively give back and work with some of the most amazing kids you'll ever see, we have a fully recognized, put-together program that dovetails with what we know about our children, what's going on within their lives, what's going on within their communities, what's going on multi-generational with their older kids, with their, with their younger spouse, with their younger children. We know all of that and that kind of builds into that. And the second, Josh, I'm so glad you're in Slack this year, that's one of the things that we're going to be talking about. We're going to be talking about how we get this incredible capital resource that we have of really fantastic older students in high school who really could be just fantastic role models and how then we help them make a connection back down into middle school, but even more importantly, down into elementary school. We talked a little bit about transitions, fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth, but ultimately getting you, can you imagine the power that you would have if you have a room full of like seven-year-olds and you're talking about making good choices? I mean, that's something that we're really going to be exploring this year.
I think it's really cool that you brought that up because I actually had an idea that it would be cool if high schoolers could mentor elementary schoolers. And that would be a great idea for them to see maybe a little glimpse of themselves in the future and what decisions to make, it could give them kind of like an outline. And in regards to programs that are in place to educate elementary schoolers about substance abuse, we actually have another grant from the state to produce more opioids over the summer. And we're looking to shift the focus from drugs.
Opioid. We're not opioid prevention, public service announcements.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Opioid prevention.
I was hoping nobody else called that.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you. But we're looking to roll out commercials that will focus on elementary schoolers and give them a little bit of knowledge, maybe not as dark as the ones that were viewed today, but a little bit of knowledge as to what is out there and what not to do.
And those will be fantastic. You have, so you're sitting here at the Tech Center and the Tech Center production values that they can put together, several of their animated pieces that they've done to deliver messages have been really incredible. The one for attendance in particular is really, is really, is really quite great. So that will be some of our work. Look, we're getting ourselves into work. This is what happens whenever we talk publicly about things. At the end of the day, no matter, no matter how many times they say, hey, community, come out and you do, it always ends up, we end up with more stuff to do, which is good, which is good, and we look forward to it. That's going to be great, Joshua.
And we do need to have more of that peer support. And as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, what we're doing with Wright Mills High School and those students going into the fifth-grade classes, that we need more of that, you know, so continuing to work on that. And statistics show that the beginning drinking age has lowered to about twelve. And that's the statistic, it may be lower, but that has been a continual drop. So agreed, from the Health Department's point of view, we need younger to get them, you know, understanding the choices, but also the coping skills.
When do we get the DARE program? When do we get it? When doing? So the one thing I, I apologize because it's my baby, we have a free camp every summer that's for upcoming fifth and sixth graders. And unfortunately, it's a first-come, first-served, which is very sad because I can only take in a hundred people because it is free. But we partnered with the Board of Education, they give us the Lenartown Middle School, they give us the building, they don't send me a bill yet. Thank you. So we do kind of, we do kind of put out the elementary curriculum a little bit to, you know, unfortunately, a hundred, only a hundred kiddos. However, once the school year starts, the deputies assigned to the middle schools, they get in touch with their health teacher. The health teacher incorporates it into that quarter, so normally, I think if they still do it the same way, it's A-B, and then they go in and so for that week, you know, they're teaching that, the lessons up until they get all ten taught at each of the middle schools. This year has been the first year there's been a deputy in every middle school, which is amazing because I was around and I had to have two middle schools and it's a lot of work. But they can really focus on delivering that curriculum to the kids all year long. So they touch every sixth grader in that building and they can really build their relationships. So that's, that really socks at home, it's pretty awesome. But yeah, so to answer your question, they get it in the sixth grade in health class.
And I will tell you that there is, I served on the high school graduation task force two years ago, putting forth recommendations to the Maryland State Department of Education. And one of the recommendations, it has a lot of traction, it hasn't come back before the board yet, but it will, and it will probably rewrite the recommendations and the graduation requirements to move at the high school level from being a half-credit of health for a graduation requirement to be a full-credit of health for a graduation requirement because they're realizing that there's so many topics that need to be covered and have the time and space to be able to do it when they're in high school. And again, it would target your ninth-grade students as they're coming in and the majority of that extra year would all be based on the things that we've talked about in this panel.
We just have one more thing that we'd like to do before we close this evening. When you came in, you had an agenda and you had a blue piece of paper. So if you want to look at that blue piece of paper, that is a feedback form for us for the evening that will help us to, first of all, help us to understand if we hit the mark in terms of providing good information for you. There's also a space in there for feedback for future forums. Our next one is scheduled for November thirteenth and it'll coincide with the same date as the save of the schools so that we can get that message out to our community in the evening as well. The other blue piece of paper I want you to look for is the ones on the table. There's a blue card there. And on that one, we encourage you to give us advice. If there's a next step that you would recommend, had given what you've heard from the panel, what you've heard from us, if there's something that we as a school system should consider as a next step, please write it on that blue card because then we can take that and share that with our staffs and with student services offices for their consideration and next step. So two blue pieces of paper for you before we close. One is the feedback form, and if you, there's pencils on those kits on the table, or if you have your cellphone, you can just scan the QR code, the same survey is there and you can complete it that way. So we thank you for coming here this evening. Before you leave, if you give us two blue pieces of paper, the ideas on the blue card and your feedback form, that would be terrific. And with that, we thank you for coming out this evening. And hopefully this will get you home in time to watch the Nats hopefully close out the season, the series. So thank you for coming.